Four.
Pause.
To the. Welcome, everyone. Well, uh, this is the panel planning board public hearing to discuss ashamed mobile park subdivision. We'll also be talking about the Woodman subdivision, but the mobile home park come first. Couple business items. Uh, one, make sure you signed in. Two, if you have a comment, please keep it to your five minutes. Uh, three, come up to the microphone, state your name and. We don't have any. Here. Uh, first, uh, for kind of like views just have. Brady come up and tell us a little bit about the project.
Okay, great. Uh, project is for a home box three point two. Lakers. Field. There are definitely tanks of other kinds of pot station. And we had it pumped out that there were not public field. They'll also have a while, while I'll give you all of them. That's why the, the very small. And then.
Uh, so the, sorry, um, the mic isn't for the people in the room. The mic is for you. Uh, so it's, it's recorded. So, uh, I'm trying to speak up. Anybody who's coming to the microphone, you have to speak up, uh, because you're not getting it. Thank you. Thank you. And if you could just summarize where we are in the application process and more bill. Um, and, uh, where we are, what we have left to do. And if there are any concerns from the CEO department.
So where we are standing today. Uh, during the last meeting, we asked for, uh, we asked for a couple of tier reviews on the wetlands studying and also. One more runoff. After discussion.
Just one second. The work, the, um, we're in the review stage, the application has been accepted but not reviewed or, uh, the application has been accepted as complete, but we haven't approved the project yet. We are still working through the approval process, and that's why this public hearing is so important. And why we as a board wanted to do it at this stage, because we're still working through it. We haven't done all the work yet. Uh, and so Tim is going over some of the points that were questioning or we're, we're digging a little deeper.
It's okay. So in, in the discussion afterwards, the board members threw, began personally, uh, it was decided with the wetland study, uh, here we could not be done, so hasn't been done and studied done yet. Uh, so learned today Shane has been working on. But that's something funny to listen. Uh, the other thing was the slow water runoff review and set out, um, request for information to four different companies, I think, and heard back from New York. And, uh, that shows. That's good. So, um, they're that way. Things like that. So the other things that we find missing from, uh, what was submitted, um, there's an engineered road. And, and six oh four C two, um, you can read with the language of the road. Where you can see with the end of it, that it says that streets for the department of design are professional engineer, which is. So we still all have. And along with that comes the construction erosion center and as the, as the project being built, uh, that also death. Um, performance bond, uh, we, we plan work that asked for moments long, but to cover the bus project. And you can see here, so if the elements there. And all the review, um, things that we, being looked at further from what has been said. Uh, the landscaping and buffer means again, I've cited the ordinance sections that mentioned, uh, don't need to, what we do request and what should be on the room. Uh, three different ordinances. So utilities, there's some questions to ask about utilities. Utilities, we ended, uh, we located above ground, shall be located, if not be on site as public. You can ask questions there on the, uh, utilization of the parcels. Let's see, there, could, could, you could ask questions on. The road engineers. About road safety and that's a lot of that is on, that is, it can start to deal in six oh four, two, eight oh seven app. And nine oh one eight five, that mentions further say defeat. Take a look at this. And those are there, um. In fire suppression on the roof. Applicating state test, the, uh, Janus Park, which this university is championed by the East and some better than right, I can solve it. That exists. In my mind, it's a question of where the pump should be located. They see, is this the quote above blood planes now, there's weapons potentially there, uh, it's gonna have to be moved. So, um, and Shannon Brooks, it's always is to be an environmental concern to better size. And the it needs to be looked at to see if this question is on which. Um, and the contract, I guess you call it, we, we, our former, I had about, uh, neutral language. Cars, the ownership makes itself a part, it should be a little more construction in those. Okay.
Thank you for that. And that will help us through the application. Um, so I would like to open it up to the public. Um, no thanks, if you have a comment, you can just lift up your hand and then I'll have to come up to the microphone, state your name. Three minutes now that. Does, would anybody like to make comments regarding this project?
Hi, everyone. Megan Arena. I'm at three oh three. Um, this is my first meeting. So thank you all for having such a thing. And I've read through some of the minutes. And I think I'd like to express my concern. I told it to be very close to this development about what it does to the character of our rural community and of our town. My, uh, eight year old goes to Connaught Elementary, and it really is a community feel here in a private area. And I'm there and sort of, uh, how high than the, uh, housing project and how that will be the aesthetics and feel of our. But I want to start with that, as we, as we work through the plan. Thank you.
Nine thirty nine on Wood. Great. From the trail back. Um. Looking at my, at the plan that we have. Um. Scale. In the field. Doesn't seem right. Um, if one thing ain't right, it must crowd everything else. So somehow we've got, get a blueprint that is going to be correct in the field. And I definitely need to see a, a surveyor. Put all the pins in the ground. I mean, what was done was, was what I want to see, but I want it done. Um, by a surveyor. So I know there's no argument. It's, it's, uh, definitely what's on the blueprint. And I'd also need to have another onsite and preferably on a Saturday when we ain't time constraint. Don't run out of my time anyway. Love to have a, that him on and maybe more people where we don't have a time constraint. Getting out to the system, he's proposing a ten foot easement. Um, truck to R A fee. I think we all know they ain't coming up over that hill. He's probably gonna have to come across his father's land. So that tells me that he's, he's to go up to the air code. Uh, also, so their construction can get done and ten foot is a wide one. It needs to be twenty five. If anything should happen to this developer, you get sold, uh, property decided gets sold, they don't get along. That system has to be redone someday. They all do. And then you need to be able to get in and do that. And they ain't gonna be able to do it on ten feet. And that could be a problem with different landowners if it isn't done correctly on our plans right here. And, um, with stormwater runoff and everything, that would be done. So no sense going there. Then the trailer is up here. I think I'm setting some of them readings up. See how the stormwater is going. Get diverted around it. Uh, I thought our code said that major drainage areas are not supposed to get changed. But I'm trying to look that up. I haven't found it yet, but I'm quite sure I read that. And it appears like right now we have natural drainage areas down through the, definitely get changed. I'm gonna try to find it that way. Appreciate everybody's time. All right. Uh, I know what it means in the world. I had seventeen years. I know what Andy's jobs. Thanks for your time.
Uh, that is an important point to bring up for us. I'm just like, Oz, the public here just sat and let Shane speak to the fact that things didn't seem to be where they should have been. Um, there's also some. Yeah, just leave it at that. So if you want to come up there and explain how things were matched out.
I'm the fall.
Yeah.
Jamie Brown, the mainland government consultant, uh, they did the, uh, center scene in plans, complaining with survey that when surveyed it, uh, we'll put it in CAD, uh, what they're like five of data. So when you pull that data out, it was invested, or you said, uh, that's causing some of their clear shit recently. That almost won. It was in the posse. And we're saying, I did the sidewalk, you know, what's all out there. I hope we're able to get a feel of mission area. You're gonna see the four paths. Mission area, you're gonna see where the pot station is and then this area is where the, uh, we should be.
Are there any further comments? We've come on.
My name is Jamie Bookist. I live at two seven hour first meeting, twenty five minutes within the ten. Wow. So I got a lot of concerns just because the mains are on our way up top, one two seven, we still record across my house. I am lucky if I have seventy five center line to the front of my house. When any time my parking's out of there, the lights are directly in my living room. Um, well, I'm just a traffic. I have, I live there now and cars are going forty five mile an hour in the tire. They hit the top, they're all unpacked on drive. And it's still busy there all the time, trying to contract what you've done out there. It's gonna be. I'm also worried about lighting. So say if you put nice development in there or bigger development in there, you know, taking, and you got, we've divided all the plates. Um, all that's here is this bigger entity, small following us. Um, a lot of that's what we're still worried about. Cause normally there are my small community, pretty bad hometown. And then, I'm not trying to stop it, but there's another thing, but put that in, in that small area. Or don't, don't damage the channel. Well, it is a little worse.
Thank you.
Ready? I'm from you guys. Not my first. Uh, politely requested second sight line. It seemed there were a multitude of questions that were, are still unanswered at this time. Um. I'm a very visual person, so to be able to feel the real feel, it can be helpful with all the more accurate. And seeing where you know, this first eight long and all of that, so. I just love to get this time, this time.
Marcia, did you get questions during this site walk that we might wanna mention in this forum and give an opportunity to have them heard and potentially responded to?
I think that's what our meetings. Like I was telling folks that were there, this is the time to ask the question.
Well, um, that's where he mentioned he was going to the written comments about the band that was being, um, separate pipe that had to cross a problem. We can as well as such, which is generally, he will be splitting on written comments. And we talked a little bit about having school bus. That's just at the top of, of the deal because it was not, it was stuff along that will be specifically this. I think, I, that's it.
Okay, uh, there's no further questions. The public hearing on James Mobile Home Park subdivision is now closed.
On the, I do have a comment, uh, I brought it all to them anymore. And I come thirty of all take dispatching. And I know.
I'm gonna stop you because I, you're on the playing board. So you can make comments whenever you want during the meeting. If you want to make a comment as a public citizen, that's uh, you need to let us know that you're commenting as a member of the public. Yeah, for sure.
Okay, I'm a member of the public. I spent thirty years in public safety dispatch. And I know that coming into a scene like that, particularly in the winter time, if you've got holes stretched out and you're trying to put water on a fire, you put it out, things like that, that's gonna be one very slippery scene. And also a lot of time attackers can get a kind of shuttle. Well, I usually fight a rural fire. That's gonna be a real problem getting in and out. And that would be my concern about that site.
Thank you. Okay. Finished. Okay, yeah, there's no further questions. The public hearing on James Mobile Park subdivision is now closed. Um, do you want to, uh, move to the Woodman subdivision? Uh, this is now, we are now moving from the mobile park to the Woodman subdivision. In the representative here from, yes. We're talking about. Tell a little bit about the project. It's just a parcel of tip off. It's good. Also, I don't give them my names. Okay, I'll get that. Okay. Okay.
She's also been in the one.
Victory, seven. Thank you. Yep. Uh, and in the building, we can just kind of do the same change and get where we are right now. It's probably.
Uh, then you can, uh, the application. And then. Theory. That because it's, uh, you're much of the thing you did on the purpose. On. Well, yeah, so we can pick up the points here. So I mean, this lot, uh, wouldn't suck. Wouldn't been subdivision, um, back in the eighties at the reason, uh, they split off one lot and sold it, uh, not necessarily. Definitely, you're just on the woodman. Um, and then there was one more lot that was split off through single lot, um, on the other side of this property. Uh, so the lot that's being read, um, there's not enough road frontage of us. It was gonna have to be a, a six, a three hundred foot road created, um, to service that one house. And in previous plans, the planning board, planning board has waived, uh, the width of the road to sixty feet, four foot shoulders on each side. And that's the, uh, waiver request that we have to have for that. Uh, so the total parcel, um, was sixteen subten acres. And now there, uh, the lots are gonna be residual lot will be five point five eight and the new lot will be three point six six. Uh, we held a site walk today, uh, few neighbors came, um, and there wasn't any opposition to it. We found, uh, all one pin, did not find one of the interior ends. Uh, but we have a pretty good idea of where it is. It's a very thick area. Uh, one thing that we did know, what is this area off to the risk on the residual lot? Uh, area that has some at nine fails, um, so that, uh, might need a little bit more scrutiny there. So I'm gonna do some work on that and look that up. See what the setbacks and things. But the, the house will not be near that. You know, the driveway will cross near it. Okay.
Is there any public comment on the Woodman subdivision? Okay, if there's no further questions, the public hearing on the Woodman subdivision is now closed. I would like to now call to order the planning board, the official planning board meeting. For the business secretary's report and the approval of last meeting's minutes. Are there any corrections? The meeting minute, any comments of the minutes?
Okay, and so the comments, uh, well, it's where we.
I believe that we accept the meeting minutes as submitted. All favor. All business. Uh, so, um, we need to continue the process of reviewing and mobile home park. Um, there's still a lot that, um, we need to look at. Um, but I think the the most pressing item that we're seeing aside from the wetlands and other concerns that we might have is, um, the issue with CO four, C two, road design, circulation, traffic, and that's um, it's all also falls under nine zero one eight five. Um, we've got letters, I assume, Shane, you have seen the letters from Chief Peters and the road commissioner.
Yeah.
Um, you've had Shane Peter, sorry, um, Chief Peters' letter for quite a while now. So there's, you wanted to do that from the beginning, that potentially that's an issue.
Yes.
Um, being out on the site today, uh, it's one thing, I think, if, uh, I'm using just, uh, looking at the site work, usually, one thing, I think, if it's a single home, but if you're putting in four homes with the exit entrance on the side of that hill, um, it's, uh, it doesn't look like the best location to add a road that comes into Homewood. Which kind of backs up with, with what the road commissioner, uh, the road commissioner commented on and Chief Peters. Um, I don't know if it'd be appropriate, uh, to read those letters.
And we just forgot one of these on the sheet.
I think I'll just read them because I think they're, um, they're pretty telling. So, uh, um, does somebody have to get it? Um, this is October sixth from Dan Libby. Says, good afternoon, reviewing proposed private road entrance for the mobile home park subdivision at nine three nine Homewood Road. I'd like to express my concern regarding the location. This section of Homewood Road is one of the most dangerous levels that the public works department needs to be in for a matter of months. I'm particularly worried about the safety of school buses and other vehicles attempting to stop or restart until during bad weather conditions. Uh, during bad weather conditions, the rain, relative tracks, and there are snow, ice, we, this is, lift it have. This issue presents a real concern for public safety and should be carefully considered before the approval of that.
You know.
Uh, August twenty point point five, uh, from Chief Peters. Uh, August twenty point point five, uh, from Chief Peters. I'm a planning board, I've been asked to provide my observations on a proposed mobile home. Part to be located in the area nine three nine Homewood Road. Your biggest concerns regarding the new proposed entrance from Elwood Road. The proposal locates the road in the middle of the ski hill on the right hand side facing east. The proposed entrance would be problematic during icy and snow conditions, coming down the hill. It could be difficult to stop or slow down to enter the new road, going up the arrow traffic, turning into the new road to the left. May need to stop to allow oncoming traffic to pass or making a turn, depending on road conditions, this is problematic. There are many times when vehicles have trouble getting up that hill during the snowstorms. Say nothing for having to stop and get going again. The area from eight ninety to nine five five four Elmwood has seen eight documented vehicle accidents by panel fire and rescue in the past six years. Several which were serious enough to require ambulance transport to the hospital. Cumberland County Sheriff's Department has on several occasions requested either fire department assistance with traffic patrol or shut down the road completely. Traffic is much heavier on this road than in years past, especially during morning hours. Vehicles had been Eastbound with community exceed the coast, even when presented to the river. There are two other items that drew my attention while reviewing post park rules, the first being parking allowed on the twenty. Wide post road. This itself is not an issue, however, parking should be limited to one designated side of the road at times. Without specific parking rules, vehicles could park on both sides of the road, potentially blocking ambulance. Second item of concern is proposed complete. Is the proposed outside burning ban within the entire park, many state law allows for cooking wildfires. When approved by the Pits, the Pits are required not to exceed three feet across and plants must reach normal. The town and panel serves state law in this regard, but just to bring you aware. That the panel fire department won't force saving law, saving money on how much. And you have to go with the firm, they didn't open a spread within the park. The last letter is from, um, it's from a road statement, that's not, um, home road from. Jeremy Arsenal, Director of Transportation for R C five. In response to question about the bus stop that the proposed project figured out. The town and panel map nine lot six dot zero one. Safety of students is my utmost concern, and therefore I would need to stop as dangerous we climb up the hill. And the sightlines from the intersection above, especially during Oakland weather. I would not allow it as a usable bus stop, we are not allowed to travel to the subdivision as R S U five. As a policy which does not allow buses, buses to go down prior roads.
So, uh, just, just to more of the process. So it's a public hearing tonight, uh, the board voted on this last meeting. So I think, um, the public hearing is actually set such a line for what a decision should remain. Uh, the board got on this night that they feel comfortable. Um, it's also acceptable to deny the project, but you have to deny it, it's not finding in the memo. Uh, in the, in the ordinance, um, so I was saying. In terms of, um, the process and the respectful of the timeline. If the timeline is to be extended, it needs to be agreed upon by both parties. And it has to be clear what the next step of the outfit is amongst the submitted. In terms of the info, and like I said, obviously, I'm not, uh, not voting just through the. Uh, advisory home process, it's. If the board feels that, uh, they want to deny the project tonight, they can, um, but actually, uh. That's the sort of plan and has to be referenced, um, and it has to be referred to in the ordinance, so. Um, their best decision, it needs to be, uh, it needs to be referenced, that's all I would say. But if there's any additional info that needs submitted, that, that should be written on body document, but.
I think, uh, given, uh, given that information and the concerns that so many folks have about entrance. Shane, you have, um, a comment about that, uh, mitigate. What everybody is seeing as a pretty major problem.
So the, and I'm sorry, I'm approved by you.
Understood.
Uh, and the biggest concern, the parking on one side of the road or the other, is it potentially.
That wasn't, that wasn't the biggest concern.
Uh, was.
That wasn't, I just read the letters.
But it moves R A C's. Uh, all the town and the state.
Right, but you're not addressing that, the fact, um, that it's on a hill.
But there's nothing about Tom Warren, it's, I haven't heard anything that.
So if you look at, uh, nine zero one point five. It specifically says that, that some issues can't cause. More unsafe, so it literally said. So a few years in fact, it's earned. Which is also part of the ordinance that we would that. Reach out, give road commissioner and the fire chief. And they have. Right, so that fits in, that's part of the ordinance.
Uh, they agree with your terms, no way to take that, but a relative problem.
This is your, this is your. This is your.
Yeah, uh, we might say that, uh, one of the themes on sentencing in there is there's no ice conditions. Uh, they don't know how long it is school, like, down, right down the road. And it's that's the, so, that's cool, and so if I could just take over this, like, um. Crash Nelson on the road to provide data, uh, behind this recognized low, uh, oh, oh, yeah, hell. Um, top five, I was wanting. The use was permitted in a lot of conferences as well, so I think there's a path forward on this, but. I'm just sensing that mean that all these letters are coming through the same very, since they're much snowier and that's. Uh, I recognize you then, uh, but that's a silver wrong with the town. Uh, we've got to navigate our, our manifesting that, but kind of a theme problem, we went into the red brown state. Um, as well as creating the small software, and changing that out, chance to talk to the small. And see if we find a path forward for that.
You've had, my, my problem, and anybody feel free to. Um, but. You've had Chief Peters' letter since August twentieth.
Well, the road commission.
The, right, understood, but you, you still knew that this was a central issue on August.
And when did this forward to come through?
That came through today, but again, uh, that's just confirming what the fighter commissioner already. Told you guys, and I'm sure him had a successful, you guys.
So we just hit completing this last event, we've been waiting for additional comments, and we told you the rest of. Uh, which was, I think, if you're playing Tom, or was it set the keys now, I think through this process, if you're solidated, uh, submission to the next submission, so. I'm not trying to delay this, delay this, but I do sense a comment being allowed to do this. Um, snow, ice, branch, so we have three data points in the panel, let's take that back now, uh, for general response. Because, I mean, what you're telling me here is even a single family residence can know it, the danger is small. Uh, but the D O T has already approved this as a, a access point, so there's one data point of the dashboard. So again, if I actually take this back, whatever you got for you of all, at least we need a bit of your assault.
Question, here is whether this. We develop is going to, uh, cause some reasonable traffic death and we're safe, so it's looking at as a result of. The mobile park isn't going to increase or cause traffic, that's really like, but the question, that's, um, that needs to get answered. My, my feeling is that, um. I wonder if any access on that, on, um. Onwood Road could be saved, um, I have, I. Be honest, no, it's a dangerous road, it's dangerous incline, and it's been stated by fire chief road commissioner, but it's, it's. Not a safe egress and entrance, despite the D O T permit for the driveway access before up home, so. I think. If we think no road can be made safe there, which was Shane though now, before we go any further. Or if we feel like, we're concerned, um.
Uh, maybe not David Garland.
Jamie, sorry, Jamie, Jamie, Jamie says, you know, give me a chance to make it safe. Beyond ice and snow, just in general, and don't forget those kids. When the mobile homes have to go up to the block to the top of the road, or there's another road trip. Yes. If you think that you can, it means as if you say, then maybe you should move forward, but I think you need to decide as a part of this.
Does anybody else on the board that?
Yeah, I, I think, obviously, this concern that they brought up about the road. I lean towards, if the applicant thinks that they can address these road concerns. To give them the opportunity to do it, uh, even though they have had some of these concerns for a while. You know, there's other pieces of application that are also not really. Complete with new wetland studies and whatnot, and so we're not necessarily. It feels like we haven't really actually received the final application. In that there's so much stuff up in the air with the roads, with the wetlands, with potentially even. Moving or eliminating, uh, one of the units, and so. I, 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 I'm in favor of, uh, kind of give it, let an applicant. Try to make a case to address concerns raised by road commissioner, fire chief and. Uh, what they bring forward. The road commissioner, fire chief may look at and feel like it doesn't address their concerns, but giving applicant. An opportunity if they wish to provide further information seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, I think, um, the only thing I might say about that is. Um, is just the timing of everything, and they've had plenty of time. To address the wetlands, they didn't do it, now they did it, um, they knew about this. Almost two months ago. Uh, we didn't bring it up. Um, obviously, it's not a concern for them because they didn't bring it up or do anything about it. So, uh, I'm thinking, well, like, I agree with you, um, in some ways, uh. There are so many things outstanding, it's almost like the applicant needs to start. Um, because there are so many things that have been poorly addressed or not addressed. And we've been, um, we've been trying to address these with him for quite a while. And, um, I'm not sure that time. Giving the applicant more time, my concern would be giving them more time, when really, it's almost like at this stage of. Anybody else?
Uh, as I, as I think about the road issue, um, especially after doing a sidewalk with so many towns. I think if we do not honestly ask questions about the road issue, we are not doing our job, especially on a, on a piece of road that. Everybody avoids in storm and everybody, and, and knows that that is bad. So we need to do our due diligence, um, and address that road issue, because every, almost a person ever bought that. Um, so I think it's something we have to make sure that we're getting evidence about, or, or a response. I have other concerns after seeing. Did the road move?
There's only an application, the location of town one could be okay, and that first degree of death. My novels down the road, ask for it to be best. Uh, so there were multiple letters from. Uh, help stating in France, doing D O T about the nine. And that's why I ended up bringing up there and dropped out. Uh, that was a lot of the stuff that took up a lot of time in this application. Was the uncertainty or unclarity of what the town wanted and what the town did. Because I'm through. I think four different people. And then we had an agreement after I had a. Or a lot of extra stuff, a lot of money. But the big comment was that the town asked for the route to be moved to town, for not has. Uh, so the, every mill happens to sound off. That's a town of ten percent, nice long day, it's a, a. Yeah, mobile home park ordinance, that's a.
They, they used the road because of the words, not because the town has.
But it came out as a issue.
Because we're following the orders.
Right, and that's.
So it wasn't the town didn't ask, is it? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All the organizations are. I rely on you, uh, plan, new plan, uh, I might make a chance to provide data, uh, motion. Ask each other that, uh, based on what he was appearing, but like to the champ provided the, uh. Um, coordinated with all of this, but instead of people, we thought of the fire chief reporting. Uh, we can't define others, it had a balance, we had that one, but to your point, we have a ten six letter. And I think your letters, I have two different points, a recent objection. So I'm not trying to figure out this, but it seemed like a lot of my, but all of a sudden, it's not always fair.
What, what I'm saying is, yeah, there's. There's, there's a need because there's a problem.
On that, there's no. Uh, road commissioner, fire chief, and enforcement, um, me, I have to. Don't adjust enough in the name of us. And he said, oh, I'm a more asset, you're something, God. One area together, out of that, and I think the letter sent out.
So.
Mayor giving the letter for send out to everybody.
I think we're, I think we're kind of talking around, so. What I'm saying is, we've had an August point letter. And, and, um, this was stating. And and um, this was stating that the road is. You had ample time. You knew this was gonna come up. We, we were gonna read this letter and we have, you knew it was coming. And we're two months into this and now we want to try to address.
I'm not sure why. If I really have a group permanent one entrance. Why is it now a? I understand the same thing. Making it right.
Um, then to. And saying, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this. But the state is just looking at sight lines more or less. But the town actually has data on the ground, they have experience. And so we kind of have to go with. Our local knowledge. I mean, you can dismiss this letter and say that this, this is not a issue.
I mean, again, I'm trying to business, what might be with if I'm. Figure out that the data don't help fire at all. Uh. Fire, 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 that anytime you go pretty, going down with a fire and see the snow.
What I'm asking is why didn't you do this a month ago?
We found out a key job and we'll wait to come in, need to start the process on the formulary. Questions that again, I didn't know something very full. You found out how to get your question out and call us all that needed to get him to provide the response, but. I think that would be true of uh of Karen inside of all that we're going to say, so we put up and all this out.
Uh. Well, you, you need to have, I mean.
It is.
So what I'm gonna. Does anybody else have, uh, what is the board's thought on? The next step, you guys can sit down, please.
Nice, are we talking about the road issue or are we talking about, yeah?
We're talking about the road. Um, and uh, what? What my thought is. Uh, with the information um. From the site law, from Chief Peters' letter, most importantly, with the backup information from. The road commissioner and RSU, I think we need to look at under North Star. And then we need to be conclusion of law. Number five. The proposed subdivision will or will not cause unreasonable highway or public traffic or unsafe conditions. So from all this information, uh, an applicant hasn't presented. You know, they have the information, they haven't presented. Anything to to show that uh, Chief Peters is is incorrect, that there's a definite of this that. That this proposed subdivision, I would propose. Will cause unreasonable highway or public road, we can best consider.
I would recommend, I have on three five, but I would also suggest this conference with eight oh seven app. To me, um, all items, I'm not sure where we're going, if we're inside. Do you develop them and out of it? Um, but provide you see. You need egress and ingress to and run a site and minimize conflict with the flow of traffic. I just want to turn it up inside the development or moving in and out of the development in eight oh seven. Is that, otherwise I'd say that also comes in.
Being referring the the CEOs.
Yes, yes.
This is what I, when I was reading over, but the ordinance is not why. It's, it's unclear to me from the ordinance, whether it's talking about inside the park or outside.
Yeah, because it seems like it goes, um, I'm just trying to get clarity, um, because it's vehicular access.
My, my interpretation was that this had more to do with safety concerns inside the park, but um.
Yeah, the next time of the site.
Yeah.
So that's what makes me, yeah, when you're talking about providing for taking, you mean ingress and egress to and from the site also minimize conflict with the flow traffic. So that, of course.
I think that would fall under.
Yeah, that portion also just seems to really.
Yep.
I'm on what we're talking about. We also look at X to D, it said that the regions being a convenient, safer, limited vehicle access to all buildings and all structures at all times. No. Was that only getting? Um, that was eight oh seven add two, but going down. Yeah, got that. But also means like we made a point that the R three five. Letter really was talking about all of those things, not just like.
Yeah. And that's not it. Yeah, that's the others.
So the one verse, these are, these are references directly from the ordinance for your access. Um, so is there, is there a standard that is referenced, um, right now?
Well, indeed, what's considered in the. Versus. I mean, it's a lot of, you know, I'll take a few of them. Um, like the parking was ten, twelve feet above where the lot can be, and there may or may not be stairs going down since that. Qualify that, it's still not clear yet, that layout just, once we're out there, just not clear.
So given that, uh, what's the board's thoughts on um, providing more time for the applicant?
I'll reiterate that. I'm, you know, it, this is the first time we've looked at a project like this and, and so. It, it is understandable in some ways that uh, the process. Is less refined and there's more back and forth, I think, potentially, you know. I, I agree with Todd that some of this stuff should have been addressed earlier. Uh, but I'm also inclined to say there's a number. Of kind of outstanding information that we requested from the last meeting. Um, you know, to, to have a wetland study and to have it be independently reviewed and so. You know, as opposed to starting the entire process over. I lean towards giving the applicant one more month to present at the next meeting. Have all the information available that addresses all the concerns raised. In relation to both the road, the wetland, the leach field, uh, the grading, uh, if, you know. Units need to be rearranged and, you know, uh, or eliminated because of wetlands. Um, and, and, and as they said, you know, give them an opportunity to. Have one clean packet presentation that addresses everything we've discussed in the entire project, process. For us to review and at that point, we can say this does or does not address the concern, but you know, as opposed to. Just saying no tonight and starting, ask them to start up from scratch, uh, you know. Give them, you know. Allow them an opportunity to, you know, address these concerns and. We may find a month from now that they have not addressed the concerns, but at least then we can. Say that, you know, we gave them every opportunity and more to address the concerns that we raised and. There'll be no question uh that we didn't give them an opportunity to address these concerns.
Okay, I agree with that, Simon, I just. I won't hold this respect. And and. The easement is questionable with distance assets. Uh, relative to that seems to be the risk. That's.
My only, the only, and and I do all of those things, I agree, I agree on. Um, we haven't gone through the wetlands, uh, that can be admitted with this, but the road is on the road. So, and and there's no other. As that site is designed, there's no other place to put the road entrance. That's gonna change, just so while I'm all for it, but you don't have a lot of the data. A final call on the, where everything goes on plan. In some ways, that's kind of new because the entrance has to be on a road. And ultimately, how, how does that change and if that changes that significantly? It's not a question of rebooting, I probably used to operate, not a question about rebooting the project. It's really, is this project um appropriate for this site because of the road and the road. Um, if they could get up on Allen Road and put an entrance there, that, that would be a total good plan, a whole different animal. So that's my only concern, I'm not opposed to giving time, but I just don't see how our economy's gonna change. Chief Peters' letter to any significant degree and so often. We need to deal with. This statement, conclusion of law subdivision review number five. Um, because the road is don't.
I agree with you that I, I don't think any data would convince me otherwise that the road entrances is. Not safe. When I roll open part. Um, but. So I guess at that point. I don't think you can fix that with this to be a part. My own concern, the two letters came in from the last two weeks, to be fair to it.
Yep.
Um, the first of the burden of this and the site walk, yeah. It's kind of the collusion of these things has happened since October sixth, when that first letter came in from the road commissioner. Um, so.
August twenty.
August twenty, she appears, so that's one. And then we've got two letters that come in and you can see the site walk and appear from normal citizen. So I, I just feel like some of the, some of the road urgency has come in through the last two weeks. Not, not disregarding to your uh letter, it's just some of that hurts in, in terms of. Yeah, but the town does, um, so that's my, that's my only thing in terms of having to be fair to the process, yeah.
Well, I mean, you brought up an answer, why, right? I mean, I don't disagree in terms of safety in that flow, but for the private road. Coming from Al has an amusement, is that possible? I know drive was done, it's like I forgot, our neighbor has a drive is impossible. But it's a drive. Possible with the, the ordinance?
Yeah, thanks.
I don't know the answer to that, too, man, I don't know, I have to go through the ordinance, fine.
I think it's been a question of the issue, it's. You can create a series, it's nothing. Uh, it's just kind of not always, and so. So I can get this apart. I'm gonna have the, the, you get that, I can do it. Um, that's my head. Um, we know that, and. No, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to really exist, so.
Would that be a different, be a different project?
Did people interpret the letters that if they were saying that. You know, even a single family home at this location would be too dangerous to do, or were they pertaining to have a multi-unit particular?
Or some violence. So.
Yeah.
Very.
Yeah. Which they do another location.
I think I, I would, uh, I would, mercy, I would say one thing, but I think this is. The road issue is coming up because the road is. Literally, and we were bound to get to it. And the applicant knew we were gonna get to it. Um, and it's just, it's coming about tonight. The site walk just made the road issue, we all knew it was an issue, driving, everybody drive on that road, know. That that's not the break spot. We had this letter since the drawing it. Um, we even know this was a mission. It just hasn't come up in our conversation, have gotten. We've only, we've only started to discuss the completed application. Last, last month and just very touched on, so. I think um, the addition of the other letters doesn't really, to me, it's, it's a fuel to the fire for sure. But it doesn't, if we didn't have those other letters, if the applicant had those letters two months ago, we didn't, this letter, really. To me, it's really Chief Peters' letter, that's, that's a problem and if this was coming. Like literally, we were going to be talking about this letter that we've all had for two months. So again, I'm, I'm inclined to move on, on this information, but I'm, I'm getting the sense that the board would prefer to. Um, give the applicant more time. Um. I, I don't see how, um. I'm thinking of the board members, we spend a ton of time. Uh, going over these things, it's a ridiculous amount of work for us to go through. And this project has been going on for quite a while. And uh, my inclination is that you've given the applicant. A fair shot at it's to be perfectly honest, we've done some, because this is a. Secret um complicated project. Um, but I, I think at this stage, we've got a, we've got something that's pretty clear. And not really workable in any real fashion. So I, I'm not sure what, what another month is gonna do for us. Um, or what we would see, what would we need to see to change the outcome of this, I guess, really. One of my one of my questions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you that I don't necessarily have in my mind that they could present information. That would change this board's uh mind or, or the road commissioner or the fire chief mind. The applicant seems to think that. They can and. So I'm inclined to give them the opportunity with them being full aware that what they present may not be persuasive. And they would have spent more time and money on something that may not go forward. But if, if the applicant wanted to spend that additional time and money to make a persuasive case that could convince the board. I'm inclined to give that, that opportunity. Uh, but like you said, they should be fully aware that it's, it, it's going to have to be very persuasive. Uh, to address the information we've. Uh, to address the information we've received so far.
There's a motion now, and then it's up to the board. So that is an option, if there's additional information. But the board feels it's necessary to, you know, move forward, um, that is to specify the state of. Um, if not, then um, the board and the, the office tonight.
Yeah, that, that's kind of my, what my point is, is um. That uh, that applicant has had this letter from Chief Peters. And they haven't had a conversation with him about this. And they haven't had a conversation with us about this, which is a little frustrating for me.
Yep.
Um, so it's, it, this wasn't sprung upon them. So, uh, I, I, uh, stand as pointing as well as thinking that. I, I think there's enough here for us to make decisions about this application. Based on the findings of both the sidewalk and Chief Peters letter.
I also, I'm trying to find out what would make us in, in a month say that's okay, and I'm not sure of the letters that we have. That it could be in that area, so if the road is totally different. If you were to move back to the, or if you were to look down to Allen, is that.
I would say it's what we're submitted.
Well, what was submitted is also not what we saw at the sidewalk, which is another. Um, so, I think there are a couple of issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would be points that have, if we, depending on how we view here. But I don't want to waste a lot of time with those conversations, that's business, yeah, we gotta get, we gotta get through this first.
Well, do you have a motion, Todd, to deny the application and just make it, we can vote on it, or we need further discussion?
First thing that we do under confusion of law. Um, is, is. Look at number five. And we need to determine whether or not it will or will not cause. Unreasonable highway or public road. So what I would say is, I would propose a motive that is. That the planning board, I'm opposed. Um, the proposed chain mobile home park subdivision will cause unsafe conditions with respect. To use the Elmwood Road violation of six oh four C two nine zero one three five. And zero seven F of the common land use ordinance, based on the. Um, but the fire chief provided the. If the board um feels that we have enough information to move on that proposal. But if the board, you're, if you want to do that, we're fine. The point of this conversation, we, we, I won't, I won't be.
The only way that I could vote is. Said it will not, you're using road improvement application at that, at this time. I can't say that in that way, so. That's random. I, um, I agree that, I, we have to say that it will. Cause we're usually. Is that any location? That's probably hard to cover our recesses, but quantity may have.
So, uh, I mean, that planning board, did you feel that that was? So should we, um, and then this was kind of my question, and this is where I'm trying to get a handle, help us to do this, so. Should we vote on number five and their conclusions of law first? And then, um. Uh, so you're talking about this.
There's some those adjusted motion, you're welcome to adjust one of those. I would um reference the suggested motion, if you're denying it, I would rather very snap five. And the reason is for all of this.
So is it? I don't know why.
Um, you're welcome to do it.
Right, and that's.
Clear for the record, you know, from the applicant, what the decision is.
Right, and that's, that's exactly what, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is. Um, by voting on uh number five, we make it clear. Or it's, it's a fine if we just. Um, make the motion that we have written. Uh, but in this, we would specifically need to. I would need to change this. If we would need to, to second. Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah. Let me read this most of them and see Sam, if this sounds okay. Yes. That will, that was a traffic study, but the number of, because you fell underneath the number, um. I mean, with the number of uh lots, the number of, um. Don't think of the word, but the people going in and out, you were underneath that, so we didn't need a traffic study. That you didn't want to pay for traffic, so that, that, this is, this is definitely. This isn't uh the amount of traffic that you're generating. It's, it's really a location of the entrance, that's the problem, and that. You were, that study would, I, I would have helped us. So, uh, I'm going to make a motion, I move that the planning board deny the application, change mobile home car. Because the project that was the safe, newer access standard under six oh four C two. Nine zero one eight five eight zero seven F. Of the common land use ordinance, this finding is supported by fire chiefs and road commissioners letters, well as. The letter from Paris five, and the board's site observations document unsafe conditions. Discussions. No discussions. All in favor? Motion, this is uh, order one. So, um, that's where we are.
You want to just leave it there on this one, or, I mean.
Yeah. There's, um, we can. Uh, is there anything else to discuss? Um, I was, I was, I was thinking about all that, um. And, and, and this is my thought process is, uh, I didn't want to go through. The entire application when this was such a glaring problem with the application. And I'm, I was just kind of thinking of everybody's time, how much of that application do we really want to get into? If this is really the crux of the problem, I mean, we could have gone through every. So, if it, if it comes back to us, you're, you know, yeah. Understood, we'll move on, thank you. So I think we can move on to uh revise uh stepping within subdivision. Aka subdivision. So, uh, the first step tonight is to.
You've got the revised page and a class plan.
From I made a quick comment on, as I said before, on the sidewalk, uh, there was some potential wetlands that need to be investigated.
Okay.
Um, because I'm, I'm not expecting that it'll change the plan at all, but I think I'd, I'd like some time to investigate.
Uh, so maybe, so we don't, uh, in, in all of our best interest applicant included. It might best to table this until that part is, because once we accept it. As complete, then the clock starts ticking. Yeah, so why don't, why don't we do that, figure out the wellings, and then go from there, okay, sounds good.
I would do the delineation of wellings, because I know according to the. Or they should be identified as.
I would, I would like to review the statements on, on this, um, as I said, it is. Something that's not going to affect the house lot area, or it affects more of the driveway. And I know that a certain percentage of weapons build, not that I think any of it's going to be built. But I, I, I do think that some delineation will be done, just to make sure that what I'm seeing is correct.
I think that would be a good idea, because then, since this project's not gonna happen right away, it would be on the plan. And what we can hear is that probably be very specific about.
Okay, so we'll table it for now. Okay, very good. Thank you, um, under other business, reminder, uh, that.
Just that change.
Okay.
Boy, um, maybe it's going to be December fifth.
Maybe it was Monday.
Oh, dear.
CEO of the. I think that I've told you everything tonight, that I've done in the last.
Yeah, just the more checking I work with the ordinance, the more I realize there's a lot of changes, especially a lot of things. That are in the conservation subdivision, should ever be part of now, in the, the minor subdivision. You can just stand on that a little bit, it doesn't seem to be minor subdivision, and it's pretty short. Uh, there's not a lot of, not a lot in there. That is there to review, and I believe that. The old major subdivision and the minor subdivision kind of went hand to hand. And I, I wonder some things when, when the major went away. And then you, you can put a lot of great detail with conservation subdivision, and when we read this, that also applies to months. That those are. That those are important. Yep, the crystal. That's why I was implying it's not be. Go without, yes.
Who goes next, son?
People wait, that's been going to. I can't. I think there are other things in the ordinance that needs to be prioritized. Just so you get them, make sure that you don't, um, yeah, schedule, uh, so we can pass, there's some things that are. Um, really more important. Just an observation, it's not a lot into the minor. It's a lot.
Um, one, one thing, I don't know if we talked about it, but since we're just looking at mobile homes. I don't know if we should put in the ordinance, I think we probably should. Because, uh. Everything is well water and power, that there should be a backup generator. As part of the mobile home. Or that so people can have water. Yeah, if the mobile home park loses power.
Bill and I have been looking at the mobile home park ordinance a lot, and, uh, and we agree that there. But should be looked at this. Um, the state has guidelines on what you can do with the mobile home park ordinance, never had a mobile. On board, uh, but I think there are a lot of things since our ordinance was written in, I'm guessing, four years ago. Um, I I think there's a lot of things that have changed that we've moved to look at. Okay, so that that being in mind.
Okay. Um, under communications, um, want to take this. Oh, yeah, just.
Um, thank you, uh, we did receive some, uh, communications, um. Uh, both on a Hudson project as well as, um. The great project that's towards and weapons, which was some. Which was based on the Google Drive. Summarize the.
Okay.
And I guess, uh, I'll say one more thing, I guess, as we get closer to some of these projects, I'll probably co-write all the comments, which one we do. For everybody to have. Marcy, can I add, if there's other things you can do on the Google Drive? No, they're just in my email. Okay, obviously, there's a, there's a few. There's, okay, let me. Okay. Uh, so.
Some.
I get all the stuff. I'm the planning board email, but I try to send. What is necessary. And, um, to you guys, and so my thought process was when we get it discussed. Then I can send what's there, and then you won't have that.
Yeah, that's true, that's a good idea.
Can I, we can comment on that, I think, Bill and I were talking about this earlier. Today, this week, it's the. Um, being the new structure that we have with Bill and I being on board and North Star being on call. Um, there's a lot of things that you need to workshop and say, who doesn't want? Um, because it's a lot of things that we thought you were doing, you thought we were doing. So I think it's a good idea to just workshop at some point and say, okay, how's this structure work?
Yeah, that's. That's fine.
You just tell me what I.
And then, and I would say, uh. We are not reading about our tasks, so if there's something that we're doing and you guys want to take it off our plate. I don't think anybody here would hearten. I'm standing off that. Not you.
So if I can go back to the CEO for, I think, did the mention of sex and, um, remind me. I did have a meeting, so the sex and, um, and. This representation, um, so we, uh. What that's the presented is a lot like the lot density that I presented in our workshop. Um, so I met with him on on that, and, uh. He's going to move forward with that lot destiny plan to come to the board. And he's working on, uh, redoing, uh, the rest of this plan. So you can expect to see some time soon, okay?
We don't want to give them, it's got two more weeks.
No.
No.
Right. If there are any else, any board members want to say?
We'll always see in the next meeting, potentially.
Okay. Yeah, that's good, you can wait, go. Okay, agenda. But no, no further comment, or. Any public comment? No. Yes, agenda next month. November.
One thing's the Woodman. Yeah, if you should be back on there. Um, and also ordinance.
Okay, we should have, we should have.
I'll maybe your workshop, we're talking about two. Yes, hopefully should.
Work on one. Do, um. We could make a decision on a, on the need for a workshop depending. You know. Uh, once it comes to deadline comes that break hour, then it's wide open. For November. Yeah, so we do be able to spend plenty of time, yeah, if you want to kind of leave that a meeting, and I don't see anything pressing, I'm no.
Since, um, I did draft a. Google letter for, um, that would be used for a project like Woodman. Just we have the, the frame of, and also that ten. Have a look at it, but it goes through our conclusions, one that we get down. Use for that. It could be ready.
That would be helpful. Okay, nothing else, and that we. I'll be sure.